Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Oregon Village Board. It's 5:00 PM on March 19, 2018. I'd like to call me in order and request roll call, please.
Boudreau?
Here.
Grenier? Staton?
Here.
Brethauer?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Bollig?
Here.
Thank you. Item three, public appearance, 3A, discussion with village auditors regarding closing of tax increment district number two and possible board action. Under that heading, one is to accept the TID 2 closing audit, two, create Fund 221 Affordable Housing Fund, three, approve use of TID 2 balance, and four, previously approved resolution number 1716 Affordable Housing Initiative Funding and Resolution 1737, closing TID 2. That's FYI only, so welcome and we'll see what you have to say.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Rysinski, audit partner with Johnson Block. And we have the TIF audit. It's ready to issue. I think the relevant information, just to keep this quick and to the point, would be on page nine of the audit. There's a couple of footnotes there in which, you know, want to make a few points that get to the reason why there's an audit. I mean, this is going to be a closeout audit of the TIF district. TIF 2 is going to be terminated. And at the end of the district's life, there's a requirement to have an audit. And one of the main reasons to do that is to make sure that, you know, the final accounting is done correctly. And there's a, you'll see on there, there's a note five, which talks about increment sharing. And the point that I want to make there is that, you know, TIF 2 did pay off and share increment with TIF 3 as identified in the previous project plan amendment. Note six, refunds to overlying districts in the village. What happens is at the end of the life, there was some excess increment there, and that needs to be redistributed out to the overlying taxing jurisdictions. You've already made a payment of roughly 90% of the value of the, what was left to be refunded, and which were shown as $566,909, of which $146,000 is the village. So that will be, I think that's one of the items that you've got on here for discussion in terms of what to do with the village money when it's redistributed in there. And then the final thing is the affordable housing and housing stock improvements. And this was a new change in TIF laws, but you've already adopted, I believe, the resolution associated with, you know, affordable housing. And what the statutes allow is that the district can keep the, the village can keep the district open another year, which it did. And then the increment in the final year is to be distributed and used in accordance with, for affordable housing. So one of the items on there that we're, you know, the village is looking at doing is creating a separate fund. And that money will be, in essence, escrowed and to be used for affordable housing in accordance with the statutes. Those were the main points that I wanted to emphasize in terms of doing the audit. What, just a couple of final things. I mean, what we, assuming you approved the draft, then we will need to get a representation letter, which we will have that available tomorrow, and then we can finalize and send a PDF to the village. And that gets sent out to the overlying taxing jurisdictions. And then there are some requirements with the Department of Revenue to file some final reports, which we went over with the village earlier today in terms of what has to happen. And then the district is, in essence, done, so.
Questions at this time?
Just to be totally clear for everyone, could you please explain where TIF 2 is currently?
I think I'd be...
On the northwest corner of the village includes Licon and up in that area, Jerry.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear what we're talking about here. And then the other thing that might have merit in discussing a little bit is to explain why we're able to close it at this time.
Well, the expenditure period ended in 2015.
Okay.
And by, Kevin can help me on this, but by state law, once you're done with expenditures, you actually have to close it. And as Kevin explained, we left it open one year longer for the Affordable Housing Fund.
Great. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what we're talking about here.
Yep.
Any other comments from staff?
What?
Anything over here, questions, comments? Okay, thank you for that report. So we have item 3A, one, to accept the TID 2 closing audit. We need a motion on that, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Item two, create Fund 221 Affordable Housing Fund. Want to tell us a bit about that?
Kevin just mentioned it. That's what we're doing. We're going to put the $483,000 in there as a new fund, Fund 221.
Will that appear in the 2019 budget, then?
You will actually see it in the eight, you'll see it in our financials for '18. We're actually going to create it this year.
Okay.
So we need a motion, please?
Right, Lisa.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Questions or discussion?
I'm going to abstain, just because it's kind of tangential to my position with Habitat for Humanity, not knowing which way the discussion's going to go.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and abstention for Jeff. And then three, approve use of TID 2 balance?
Do you have a question, or?
Just, we're referring to the balance that we're going to use for affordable housing, right?
No, this is the money that, so you have the fund that got created for affordable housing. That's separate from this money. This is the money that went to us, went to the school district, went, you know, they get their share.
Right.
Yeah. So we're, this is not affordable housing. This is just our fund of the balance that was lifted in TIF 2. And so Lisa and I went through here and we, we use it at, for example, we use $60,000 as an advance to help purchase the property, if you may remember that.
Mm-hmm.
And then we used it for some just in general, mainly using it for one-time expenses for consulting services. And we were just talking this afternoon with the auditors that if we don't end up using all the money in '18, we'll just transfer it to a capital fund. And then we'll be done, we're done using it.
When you say a capital fund, you mean?
We probably put it into Fund 414 for equipment or something, one-time purchase.
All right.
Any further questions or comments?
We generally, I think Lisa will agree with me. We sort of did this to help hold the levy down the last couple of years in a general fund. That's what we did by using some of this money for consulting fees.
Is there a particular purpose for the special legal line item?
We increased our legal expenditure the last two years. And so we were, again, as an attempt to try to hold levy down, we just, we used this to help pay for some of the additional legal expenses in '18.
Anything else? So we have the motion, second, to approve the use of the TID 2 balance as indicated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And item four is informational only.
I don't think there was a motion, Steve. Was there a motion? I think I jumped in before he did that.
On three?
I've got a motion for one, and I got a motion for two, but I don't have a motion.
I have motions for all three. I think I jumped the gun.
I've got Bollig and Brethauer for one, and I've got, is it Carpenter and Jacobson for two?
Genie and Jenna.
And I don't have anybody for three.
Well, they're all looking like they trust you more than me, so we need a motion on item three.
I'll make it.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Try again. All in favor?
Aye.
That carries, thank you. Okay, so then we're all okay on item four, right?
Yeah, four was just information.
Okay.
Good. Thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate you being here. Item four, approval of minutes, there are none. Item five, approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight for approval in amount of $393,582.77.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
I just have a couple of general questions. I don't want to disappoint anybody by not asking. Especially when Lisa trucked all those vouchers down here. Yeah, I know. The copier leases. We're spending $1,000, is that a month, on copier leases? Is that, is that right?
For Gordon flush?
Yes. Well, GFC leasing and Gordon flush.
Yep.
So, I mean, I, not trying to micromanage or anything like that, but would it be cheaper to own?
We, well, we actually own the current copier, but...
Some of them are like a lease to own.
Exactly.
Oh, they are?
Like the lease that we were paying on our copier upstairs, that's done and now we own it.
Okay.
But that also includes the paper.
It includes toner and maintenance.
Okay. So it's leased to own, so that cost monthly doesn't seem quite so bad now.
Right.
So you're kind of doing a time plan to own the copiers.
So we're going to, as you, the board knows, you know, we have the colored copier coming, and we're going to keep this one. But my experience, I'll be honest with you, it's like trying to keep an old squad, to be honest with you. At some point, you know, the copier is yours, and now you have to get rid of it because it's broken at the end of the five or six-year period, so. But this one upstairs is still usable.
All right. Thank you for that. And then on Pelletary, just a general question also. What's the credit for can removed?
Oh. Yeah, what number is that, Jerry?
That is 9882.
Yeah, that's something I've been working with. Yes, can remove. Those were two, those were two situations downtown where someone had been paying on carts that for many years had been paying for carts, but also been subcontracting dumpster service. So it was something that was discovered in a change of ownership. And so we went back and actually followed PSC guidelines, which, for water. But we went back two years and offered them a settlement of 221 or something like that.
Okay. That's unusual, no wonder.
That's a good guess, Jerry. It doesn't, it doesn't come up very often.
No. And what, I didn't see for the first time in a while, I didn't see a gas, a lean credit, you know, by contract, whenever.
You mean for the Pelletary?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that varies. I mean, it's, I haven't seen one, I think, in the last two months.
No, I guess I just haven't noticed.
Yeah. Right. It's, there's a fixed price, and when the bulk price goes over a certain amount, then that increments up.
Yes, exactly. And I see you got salt, so the shed must be full now.
Well, I'm not going to say anymore, anything about salt, because every time I say something, then we get hit.
Well, don't, just don't say we have plenty.
No. No, we're still looking okay for salt for this year, but...
And then, number 12724, an Estrada security deposit.
Jerry, you are catching some good ones. So, believe it or not, that is the first person that moved out of the motel that we are returning the security deposit to.
I was wondering what the heck we're doing with security deposits.
We are not, not everyone's getting a security deposit, I'll tell you that, but this person is, yep.
And...
You're a landlord, Jerry, so.
Yeah, in a small, indirect way. $485, how much is the rent up there?
That's what it was.
Really? Those are my questions.
Any further questions, or did Jerry cover it all?
I had one question.
Yeah.
Item 10972. I was trying to figure out exactly what the regulatory function is for the Dane County Land and Water. Maybe Jeff could address it.
Yeah, actually, Dane County Land and Water, we contract with Dane County to have them administer our stormwater and erosion control permit process. These are actually pass-through costs, so we pay Dane County, but then they go into accounts receivable. So those individuals that are listed there, in turn, are billed those amounts for the, those are erosion control and stormwater inspections.
So you said it's a pass-through?
It's a pass, most, most of the time it's a pass-through. There are, there are occasions where it's stuff that is on our projects, and we obviously pay that portion.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, so a motion, second, to approve vouchers in the amount of $393,582.77. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Staton?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Boudreau?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Item six is community input. Anyone wish to address the board tonight? Hans? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and happy almost spring, hopefully. So I'm here tonight about, Hans Milner, I live at 133 West Lincoln Street, also with my, my wife lives there. And I'm speaking on behalf of both of us. My first item concerns an email I sent to the trustees and to you, Mr. Grace, on the seventh, concerning spending on completion of Perry Parkway, about $1.2 million. I'm concerned about that because I don't see how that's going to increase the tax base at all, and therefore, it's not going to contribute to paying for it. I was hoping for a response. I haven't gotten any, and I'd like to see some indication whether any of you will, I think the structures of these meetings, such as you can't right now, but I would like some commitment on part of some of you that you will respond regarding that.
Yeah. Why don't you, feel free to give me a call.
Anyone else?
Call me.
Okay, thank you. My second item concerns the pursuit of approval or extension of the urban service area to the west and the 80 acres, which are west of the Oregon Parks neighborhood. I think it is an ill-advised move, and I think it is inconsistent with some of the village's comprehensive plan objectives. And so I was just reviewing some of those in the, in the village comprehensive plan. It says the village's transportation plan element is consistent with state, a number of state original plans, one of which, just for Dane County, encouraging a range of transportation options, relieving traffic in the downtown, downtown, integrating transportation modes. And here's one in the Wisconsin pedestrian plan, make pedestrian travel a viable, convenient, and safe transportation. Viable is the first thing they list there. And then in the transportation goals for the village itself, encourage neighborhood designs that support a range of transportation choices and minimizes absolute reliance on the automobile. No numbers there, but you get the drift. So prior to coming to a hearing about which, which was offered by Vandewell and Associates, I checked WalkScore. Are many of you familiar with an application called WalkScore? If you're not, I strongly encourage you to get familiar with it because it is a realistic, a tool for realistically assessing whether people living in a place will find it practical to walk anywhere, okay? So I did WalkScore for a property right at the far western edge of the Oregon Parks street there, which is more than a mile from here. And the number I got was eight out of a possible score of 100, and WalkScore considers that almost completely dependent on automobile travel. That is not consistent with, oh. And so at that meeting with Vandewell, I asked the village planner, realistically, do you expect any people living in this neighborhood to do a significant number of their errands around the village by foot or bicycle or other means than a car? And he said, no. He didn't doubt the WalkScore number. So I think he was, first of all, you should be clear what you're choosing there. You're basically choosing to add another neighborhood with many more residents. It would be possible, say, two, two houses per 40 acres in the township, who will come here and expect to drive everywhere. And that's not how you make, that's not how you make minimize absolute reliance on the automobile or making pedestrian travel a viable, convenient, and safe transportation option. Now, the village is really good about sidewalks and bike paths. I can't fault the village for that. But if you walk much as a, as a means of transportation as opposed to exercise, you will know that distance is the main impediment to walking. You spread things out, you spread things out far enough so it's convenient to drive is directly in conflict with things being close enough together to walk. So I think it's a mistake. I'm concerned that the village is feeling like the debt burdens it's looking at taking on with a number of projects, a library, the school district is looking at spending a lot of money, a new senior center, new village hall. We're talking about a lot of money. And to say, oh, we have to grow because of that, I think is a mistake. It's not looking at a future that I consider to be a healthy and human one for this village. It will just be more suburban sprawl until we connect to Madison, and there will be, and will be nothing between us. So I would, first of all, I would encourage you all to check WalkScore and just check some, check some addresses, your own. Second, I would urge you to take on doing at least one errand a month around the village, like grocery shopping for groceries, without a car. Find out what it's like. You'll see a lot of things, especially in February, you will see things, I can't, that's provided you don't have a health issue. I don't know if that applies to you, Mr. Staton or not, and I don't, I certainly don't want to...
I'm good, healthy.
That's good.
Just old, but healthy.
Oh, that's great. Your feet will teach you things I can't, I can't explain here. So those are my concerns. And take a look at, take a look at this comprehensive plan, please. If you, if, if somebody are new, fairly new to the board, you probably, I won't be surprised, and I won't fault you if you haven't read the whole comprehensive plan. But there's some pretty specific stuff in there. It sounds great, but what counts is what happens on the ground. What counts is feet on the street. So, thank you for your time, and I will call you.
Yeah.
Doug? Thank you.
Thanks, Hans.
Have a nice evening.
You too. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? You will go to item seven, proclamations and announcements, item A, board comments.
I just want to mention that Chief Linsmeyer has continued to do a really fantastic job with our fire district. And if you remember, he presented the board with a, sort of a capital improvement plan, going through all the different equipment that the fire department has. And he recently found a really, really good deal on a, on an engine with a department that's looking to downsize. And so he's moving forward in the investigation process, but not committing to the department to purchase. And he'll be bringing, bringing it to us at the joint board meeting in June. And I'd encourage anybody on the board that's interested to learn more, to either contact Mike or contact Chief offline. But just to be aware that, you know, we do have some pretty large capital improvements that we need to make in the fire department in the coming years. And I just want to make sure I'm always keeping that in front of the board as we start to think about the things that we need to invest in.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, more comments? Go to item B, staff comments.
Open book will be held here at the village hall on Monday, April 16, from noon to 7:00 PM. And on Tuesday, April 17, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And then Board of Review will be here in the boardroom on Monday, May 21, from 4:00 to 6:00. There will be a village board meeting following that at 6:00 PM, just so you're aware.
And then we've got the upcoming election dates, and then that does affect the meeting dates. We are going to have the committee meetings next Monday, on March 26. But no, no board meeting on April 2nd, so the meetings will be on April 9, 16th, and then 17th is the organizational meeting. And typically, that's a shorter meeting, but I think we're going to move the, is okay with Genie, the discussion we had at the committee meeting on alcohol, we're going to actually move that to the 17th rather than the 9th.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I did skip over. We are planning having Rutter present the phasing plan for JCPark West at the 16th meeting, April 16. And then we've got the two, two meetings in May.
Okay. Any questions on this?
Just a quick question. Peggy, what, what did you say about a board meeting after the crime prevention workshop?
No, no, May 21st.
May 21st, after Board of Review.
Oh.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I kind of skipped over there.
The Board of Review is at 2?
No, 4 to 6.
4 to 6.
So the village board meeting is going to be at 6, not 5 that night.
I, let me start over again. I confused the issue by skipping over the crime prevention workshop. That, that's the one on April 5, from 6 to 8:00 PM. On, on May 21st, the Board of Review will meet in here from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. The board meeting then will start that night at 6:00 PM on May 21st.
Other questions on that?
No, I skipped over the workshop, that's where I got confused. Excited about talking about meetings.
When do we have meetings?
They're out of order.
I'll put that on the agenda.
Anybody else have questions?
Jerry, I'll put that on the next meeting agenda, okay?
Okay.
Put it in vouchers, and then he'll catch it.
Good, good shot.
That's a good one. I got to give you that one.
Lisa's going to work on that. Anything else from staff?
That's enough, thank you.
Item A, communication miscellaneous business. Item A, Cable TV Committee and Oregon Foundation Incorporated. Item one, discussion of possible action, change to Oregon Community Foundation Incorporated bylaws. Recommend a motion to approve changing title of the program coordinator to executive director in the bylaws.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Changing the title.
The only real, yeah, the only real discussion that I could add, being the liaison to the OCA media, is that executive director does a better job of describing what Paul does, and program coordinator does a better job of describing what his predecessor did. So it's, the OCA media is, is getting more sophisticated, more, and it's encompassing more. So the executive director positions the appropriate title.
Yeah, that seems how Paul carries out what he's doing, too.
Yeah, he definitely carries himself at, in that level.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item two, discussion of possible action, appointment of Cable TV Committee. Recommend a motion, appoint Elise Smith back to Cable TV Committee for a term ending in 2018. The Cable TV Committee is increasing to nine members. So need a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
I want to thank Judy for her work in getting another great committee member. One of the things that I've noticed in my time with the Cable Access Committee is that the engagement of the, of the members seems to be growing. And the, as a result, I think the conversations are, are better conversations, and they're more forward-looking conversations, and really positioning OCA media to be strong well into the future. So I'm very proud of that group. Thank you, Judy.
Any comments here on this motion for Elise Smith back to be appointed? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And item three is information, Oregon Foundation. Any questions on that? Item B, review of 2018 impact and connection fees and building permits.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the sewer and water, sewer connection and water impact fees, January and February are the same. Is that, is that correct? Or are those estimates, or is it just a coincidence?
I think it's just a coincidence.
Okay.
I'll double-check that, now that you say that.
Yeah. And the 2017 and 2018 building permits, are they, is that total? I assume that's total building permits for 17.
Are you on this, this page?
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
The, this page.
That one?
There's no page number, right? Give you a page number.
That is just for single family or commercial buildings.
But is that, is that total for the year?
Yes, that's through February.
Okay. And then the,
Jerry was asking, is the 17 numbers?
Oh, yeah, the 17 is for the whole year. And then for the 18, it's just.
It's just February. Okay.
Through February, January and February.
Thank you. And that's it.
Other questions, comments? Okay. We'll go to item eight, C, Discussion, Possible Action Regarding Appointment of Alternate Member to Historic Preservation Commission. Recommend a motion to appoint Abby Lees as the alternate member to the Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending in 2018. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And we saw in her letter, she's an educator with a history major and interest in architecture and.
I think we are now full on HBC. Just thank you for doing that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item D, Discussion, Possible Action, School Resource Officer, Memorandum of Understanding with Police Union. Recommend a motion as to approve that MOU for School Resource Program Officer with the Police Union.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Is, are there any changes to this agreement?
There are no changes to the agreement, as you saw in the emails. I was hoping to increase the term from two years to three years, just to provide a little more stability, but there's not a whole lot of interest in that position right now in our department. So everyone voted to keep it at two years and I wasn't prepared to rock the boat at this point.
Okay. Wondering if there are any major changes. Looks fine.
That's it.
Can the officer stay on a third year still at his option?
Yeah, there's an option for a third year. There's even an option for a fourth year if we wanted to do that. So they can continue it on an annual basis if they want. And we don't have anybody else interested.
Other questions? See, now we have motion second to approve the MOU for School Resource Program Officer with the Police Union. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Brian. Item E, Presentation of Oregon Area Senior Center 2017 Annual Report.
Good evening. You have in your packet several sheets of statistics, usage kinds of things. Probably the one that is most interesting is the usage by municipalities that Jeff has on the screens right now. Gives you an idea of how the various local municipalities are using the center, the numbers. The other one in your packet that might be particularly interesting to you is the one that is just for the Village of Oregon, the statistics of use. The other two are not that helpful in looking back at 2017 and kind of analyzing what has happened at the senior center. The annual report, which is the following page, next page, was our attempt to add some color to your lives.
Was nicely done.
It's a different format this year, but it contains a lot of the same kinds of information we've always contained in our annual reports. And if you've had a chance to look at it, I don't need to read it back to you, but a few of the highlights were that we found that over the last three years, the number of activities people engage in at the senior center has gone up 22%, which is pretty significant increase. And also helps us understand why we just feel like things are busier there. They actually are busier there. Our, my senior center software that, that we invested in a few years ago allows us to track this stuff very effectively. We were pleased to see that our volunteers, when you put their hours together, came up with donating hours to us that are the equivalent of three full-time staff people. And when you work in a place that only has two full-time staff people, getting three full-time staff equivalents from volunteers is amazing. So a big shout out to them. The pie chart in the middle, the age of users, kind of tells us that about a third of our users are under 70. About a third of them are between 70 and 80, and about a third of them are over 80. So that means we're doing a pretty good job of reaching seniors at all different stages of their lives. Down at the bottom, we see almost 11,000 meals that were served to seniors as a result of the senior centers efforts, along with the support of all of our marvelous supporters. About just under 2,000 of those were served at Ziggy's on the Thursday My Meal My Way program. And the rest were either served to people in their homes or at the center. Over on the fun facts, we were really surprised to realize that our volunteers drove about 23,000 miles on behalf of our local seniors, either delivering meals to them or taking them to appointments. And that's almost the equivalent of driving around the world at the equator. So that is a boatload of miles and our volunteer, we couldn't do it without the volunteers. So all of that's interesting stuff. On the back, the second page, which is the backside, we just note that Allison Kelch retired after 20 years. She certainly left the senior center in a good position. We had our state audit after seven years and came up with zero violations. We've been loaning medical equipment to people of all ages in the school district. Health and wellness and exercise classes are increasing dramatically. The adult day program has had a healthy attendance. Our revenue sources this year are in the chart, and we truly appreciate every one of those revenue sources. This year, we included the number next to the chart, the $17,000 there. That's what our Council on Aging, our advisory board, was able to contribute to the senior center in 2017, which is a significant amount. It covers things that are not in our budget and allows us to keep the budget at a reasonable place for our supporting municipalities. So on the left-hand column there, our community partners. We're so pleased to have the support of so many organizations and the partnerships that result from those. They allow us to do things we couldn't otherwise. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about our annual report and what we accomplished in 2017.
That's very well done and informative. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Rachel, this is a great report. And along with your recap that's in color, it's wonderful. Are there any municipalities that are making significant use of the facility that do not contribute?
You know, that's kind of an interesting question because there are seniors that use the senior center from places, for example, like Stoughton. Often though, what they're using the senior center for are activities that have a charge. So they're coming to exercise class, but they're paying for that. They're coming for foot care, but that's a, a service they're paying for. So we have use by other municipalities in that, on that, that first page tells you how many sort of others, is the category, are using the center for various purposes. So yes, just as our seniors choose sometimes to go to Fitchburg to do something.
No, but is it, is there a significant use?
I would say it's not a significant use that isn't, that they aren't reimbursing the center for.
Looking at this list, I'd say everybody is pretty well represented here. The other question I had had to do with your, your, your medical equipment in your room. I don't know how many people know about that equipment, because you've got a pretty wide range of equipment in that room. And you don't charge for that, right?
Correct. So for anybody watching who doesn't know, if you live in the Oregon School District, it doesn't matter what your age is, if you're in need of medical equipment, whether it be crutches, cane, walker, bath bench, wheelchairs, sock pullers, commodes, you name it, it's probably in our loan closet. And it is meant to go out for short-term loan. We typically loan things out for two months at a time with the possibility of extension if somebody needs it longer than that. There's no charge for that. It's a service that we provide to the community and the community supports us by donating medical equipment to us to enable us to recycle it back out to the next needy person.
Good. And the last thing I'll touch on is just the, the weekly meal. I, I think it's like 48 weeks a month or something like that. But it's down at Ziggy's and it's the My Wheel, My Meal My Way. And that's subsidized by Dane County. You want to go into that just a little bit? Because I've taken part in that. And that's, that's a good meal.
My Meal My Way came about because Dane County found out in talking to seniors that seniors couldn't all afford to eat out in restaurants. And they also would like a choice in, in what they want to eat. And they would like to eat sometimes in a more social atmosphere than the senior center dining room might be. So Oregon was lucky. I think we were the fourth site in the county. And once a week on Thursdays between 11:30 and 1 o'clock, there is a special menu at Ziggy's. There are eight different meals to choose from. They're all balanced to meet nutritional requirements. And there, the cost of those meals is a donation. So there's a donation box there. People can put in what they feel they can afford. The county recommends a $4 per meal donations. That's what we average. Some people are paying more than that. Some people are paying less than that based on what they can afford. But those meals, we, the one we had last week, we had 48 seniors at. We, it's up and down a bit. But people come in, they pick which one of the eight items. We switch up the menu every six months or so. It's gonna, there's gonna be a new menu starting in the week after this, I believe. And it, it just gives people the opportunity to get out, have a meal in a restaurant, enjoy other seniors' company, other people's company. Dane County has contracted to pay Ziggy's a certain amount of money per meal that they serve. The donations that we collect at Ziggy's get sent back to Dane County to help offset that expense. So it's been a really successful program.
Thanks, Rachel. Those are my questions. Or comments, I should say.
Other questions or comments? Yeah, the meal at Ziggy's is fun and well-attended. You know, as there a couple weeks going, there were no empty seats. That's great. That's fun. Good food.
Good. Glad you could come.
Good company. That's Mr. Bowley.
Do you have to be a senior to go?
To get the meal prize, you have to be 60 or over. Eventually.
Is that a senior?
You know, every program, every program has its own definition.
That one's 60, yes.
What'd you say, Jeff?
Nothing.
I knew, I knew.
How old are you, Mike?
I'm not telling you.
So I think you qualify.
I qualify. I'm not telling you, Jerry.
I think you're asking for some stuff further down, right, Jeff?
Yeah, good timing.
I can't wait. I can't wait. Okay. Good job on that, Rachel. Appreciate it and the work you're doing there. Item F is for information, Charter Notice of Renewal Application that they've sent for Oregon. Says an indirect subsidiary. What is that?
I mean, I gave you as FYI, in the old days, the village actually would be approving it, but they've taken all that authority away from us, so.
Yeah.
Amen.
Item G, Discussion, Possible Action, Sludge Wetwell Telescoping Valve Actuator Replacement. The wastewater treatment plant. Recommend a motion to approve Public Works to authorize replacement of four valve actuators by Dorner Company for the proposal emailed dated February 26, 2018 in the amount of $13,500 funding from the wastewater treatment plant's equipment replacement fund. Need a motion, please?
I'll make that motion unless the village president wants to.
No. I'm gonna vote no. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All right. I couldn't find any comment or any comics that would for sludge wet well telescoping valves this time around.
No seals, huh?
No, yeah, no seal waters this time. But yeah, these, these are just electronic motors that mount on the gate actuators that help move the gates up and down. We have had some historic problems with these, namely the seals on these actuators have tendencies sometimes to allow some moisture into them. And we've had them rebuilt. We had them, we had two of them rebuilt actually last year at a cost of about $1,500 per valve. Dorner came in and said, you know, this new design has a better seal. We can come in and swap out all four of these. And not only would give you the credit that you spent last year with $3,000 to replace, to repair the two actuators, we would give you that on four. And so we would have a savings of almost $6,000 to replace the actuators. You know, I've seen these, these actuators. They're a, I mean, it's a very sturdy stout piece of equipment. I'm very surprised actually at the cost. I think it's a very good cost they're giving us for this. This falls right within our Equipment Replacement Fund, which is why they, why DNR wants us to have this kind of fund so that we can make these kind of upgrades as, as equipment kind of gets older, can be improved. So yeah, it'd be my recommendation to go ahead and approve that.
Good. Thanks, Jeff. Questions?
Yeah, is there only one supplier of the valve? Is that why there's no?
No, well, they're, they're, these are, these are probably Alma, UMA actuators. And that's what we have on there right now. There'd be one local provider for that. If we were to go outside of this, it could mean, I mean, completely different actuators could, I think, would cost considerably more. Yeah. I did not feel as warranted going out to get multiple prices on it.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments, anyone? Okay, so the motion and second, to approve Public Works to authorize replacement of four valve actuators by Dorner Company for the proposal emailed dated February 26, 2018 in the amount of $13,500 funding is from the wastewater treatment plant's Equipment Replacement Fund. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item H is for information, Notice of Temporary Closure This Week, a South Main Street parking lot. On Jefferson Street, there is information on the village's webpage and Facebook page. So that goes down again this summer for three weeks, right, Jeff?
It'll be three to, three to five weeks, six weeks. Yeah, depending on weather and, but we met, we met with the contractor, well, we met with the contractor over there. And some of the electric company and Alliant and everything this last week. And then, once we select a contractor for the village portion of the underground, then we'll meet again and make sure we can develop a schedule that we can, and we'll advertise that schedule.
Okay, thank you. Item I, Discussion, Possible Action, We're Going to Waste Water Treatment Plant Bobcat Trade-In and Tool Cat Acquisition. Recommend a motion as to approve Public Works and Sewer Utility to procure the Bobcat 5600 Tool Cat from Carter and Grunwald in Brooklyn as outlined in the product quotation dated 2/27/18. Funding for the $7,500, $505 expenditure to come from existing fund balance in the sewer utility. Need a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
All right. This is a piece of equipment. This is something that I kind of came across early on. Zoom down here so we'll get on the right page. Sorry. We, you know, I was touring the wastewater treatment plant one day and I noticed that we have a Bobcat kind of skid loader over there. And I was a little surprised because I hadn't seen it out or about being used. And I, when I asked about it, I found out that, well, we had, we had purchased that maybe, was it says 13 or 14, 2013 or 2014. With the idea that they would use it to help snow plow, but mostly to unload these pallets of chemicals that they get the wastewater treatment plant. I asked if they had been used much and they said, no, it's practically new. And I was kind of questioning, you know, the, the purpose of having that kind of piece of equipment. Because our other Bobcat in our, in Public Works, which we get, we get kind of swapped out every other year for an incredible deal, gets a tremendous amount of use. Turns out that there's only 37 hours of, of use on this existing Bobcat. I think when it was being discussed with this dealer who we got it from, there's a pretty high demand for these. And they were willing to give us a trade-in value of $34,000. And we believe we purchased it for about $33,000. So it's a, they're giving us a great trade-in value and a municipal discount. Basically, the guys feel Um, basically, the, the guys feel, and I, and I do support this, that a better piece of equipment would be a Toolcat. Um, a Toolcat still does allow, um, you to be able to unload, uh, materials. I've been told it won't unload as much, but they can just order the materials in two-barrel increments instead of the four-barrel loads that they normally get. Um, but, uh, Toolcat would allow a lot more functional use around the plant, um, both inside the plant as well as for the ground that they surround out there. It also can serve as to push snow and everything, um, so we can actually upgrade and get a brand-new Toolcat and everything for seventy-five hundred dollars, basically, seventy-five oh five. Um, so they brought this proposal to me, I think this makes sense, I think it's a, it's a good use of the equipment moving forward. I will guarantee that this piece of equipment is gonna get a lot more use than, than what the existing tool, uh, skid steer is getting.
So what have they been using in, instead of the skid steer?
They've only used the skid steer just for unloading, unloading the chemicals every once, a couple times a year and, um, I don't believe they've been using it much for snow plowing.
And what would prevent them from using the existing skid steer, um, to unload the chemicals the couple times of year that it comes?
What do you mean?
Well, you had, you have another skid steer, right? Another Bobcat skid steer that gets quite a bit of use?
That's over at Public Works and it's just, we'd have to transport it with a trailer or drive it and it takes probably about, well, depend on if you're coming down New Perry Parkway, but, uh, would take a few minutes, yeah. I mean, we can get equipment over there, we can always, we can even get our backhoe with forks and everything over there if we had to, a load, a heavy load. Um, I don't believe it's going to, I, I'll be honest with you, when we, when we got this piece of equipment, I, I wasn't part of that, so I, I don't know what the, the philosophy was behind it, that's just what they've told me.
I just wonder if it would make more sense just to sell that Bobcat outright, put that money back in the, back in the bucket, um, make do with the equipment that we have and, uh, and save, save that extra money for a rainy day. Instead of get a fifty-one thousand dollar piece of equipment that's gonna be used for thirty-eight hours or forty hours because?
No, they'll be using this, they'll be using this piece of equipment a lot. This, this is, this is a piece of equipment that has multiple attachments on it, it also, it's, it's, um, it's kind of a, it's like a gator, but more than a gator, you know? Um, we use it right now for, according to the guys over there, we'd use it for trimming the trees, we maintain all that area back there that's behind the sledding hill, um, and, you know, for, um, taking equipment and stuff over to the pump station, we can take it across that small bridge over at pump station at building ten. Um, I mean, I do, I do believe it's a, a better use of, of, you know, what we have as far as equipment goes. I would, you know, the, if we just, I don't, I don't know what kind of value we'd get if we just sold it outright, you know? I don't know if we would get the true thirty-four thousand, you know how the numbers go, like when you buy a car, they're, you know, they float stuff around, but that hasn't been evaluated.
So Jeff, if, if you had to guess, you mentioned that the other one after two years or three years only has thirty-four hours on it?
The other one?
Yeah.
No, 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 the other one has hundreds of hours on it.
No, 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 I mean, the one?
In the wastewater plant?
Yeah.
It has thirty-six hours, thirty-seven hours.
Thirty-six hours, so how, and this one will be also used at the plant, the wastewater plant. How many hours do you think this one will get used?
Oh, um, I'd say several hundred hours a year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna vote against this only because I think, um, this is an opportunity to, to tr, to lean down a little bit. The guys have been figuring out a way to get it done without this Bobcat for this, for this long and I think that it'd be good to recover some of that money, but I appreciate you bringing this forward.
We have, I mean, this, keep in mind that this is out of the wastewater fund and not the, not the Public Works general fund, it's, it's out of their own, you know, and, and we have, have a strong bottom line in the, in the wastewater fund, so it's not just to know what pot it's going back into if that's the case.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me be more direct. So what will get done with this piece of equipment that's not getting done now?
I think it'll be just more efficient of, of what they're doing. I mean, right now, I'm actually have, right now I have, uh, Sonny who's going around, um, logging all the manholes and doing inspections, I could see him using this instead of having to use, uh, the pickup truck, um, it's smaller, can kind of fit off to the side better. I know it would definitely serve us for our tree trimming in that area and, and we've got a lot of trees in that back forty over there. Um, I think it would allow them to, uh, go over to building ten a lot easier by going over the bridge because they have to go over there and maintain that several times a day. Um, it's, it's like any other tool, I think, um, they will find uses for it that are, that are much more efficient than what they're doing now, but we use, I mean, over at Public Works, we use our Toolcat every single day. We have a water, a tank attachment that we water all the downtown flowers with, we plow snow with it, um, we blow off the, the paths with it. Um, I actually, I honestly, I mean, I would probably be using a portion of this Toolcat on other times when we have to catch up on some things.
Yeah, that's a question I have is, this could be used by other than just wastewater treatment plant, right?
Correct.
So, yeah, okay.
So do you, can you do snow with this thing?
Yeah, I mean, not eighteen inches, but if, for these, you know, a lot of the storms we had this year.
I like the bike paths and stuff like that.
Bike paths would be great, yeah. We already use it for stuff like that.
Yeah.
The one we have in Public Works.
Other questions or comments for the discussion? Okay, so we have the, the motion and second, to approve Public Works and sewer utility to procure the Bobcat fifty-six-hundred Toolcat from Carter and Grunwald of Brooklyn as outlined in the product quotation dated two twenty-seven eighteen, funding for the seven thousand five hundred five dollar expenditure to come from existing fund balance in the sewer utility. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that's five one, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, item J, Welcome Center fundraiser, Pittsburgh Farms plant sale at the Welcome Center on Saturday, April twenty-eighth from nine AM to two PM. Fifteen percent of sales are donated to the Welcome Center. Item K, discussion of possible action, new Public Works storage building, recommended motion, approve the task order with Rooker Millkey and Engineers, amount nineteen thousand four hundred dollars for the design bidding and construction services for the proposed new Public Works cold storage buildings. Need a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Jeff, back to you.
Okay, um, again, let's see, this is, uh, dealing with the fact that the youth center is taking over space of where that old shed is that we have and, um, that's our, we call, we always call that our cold storage building and, you know, we have, obviously, we have more and more equipment every time that we, we kind of pigeonhole a lot of stuff into that old shed every year and, uh, the guys have been asking me about, you know, what's, where is the shed and where is it, uh, and I've kind of said, well, you know, we'll have to kind of wait for that time to come along. Um, without the cold storage shed, we'd be having our mowers and everything else, um, would be exposed, uh, during year-round unless, you know, the plows would be out in the summer and the mowers would be, have to be out in the winter. Currently, it's about a thirty-six hundred square foot storage shed. I'm a firm believer in the building, what for your future, and so I looked at the, kind of the space back there and I think about a ten thousand square foot shed, um, would be, uh, a nice addition. Um, so part of the, moving the, um, storage shed over there, or the cold storage over there is also relocating the, uh, police department impound lot, which we've already talked about using a portion of the Public Works lot to have about a thirty by thirty, twenty-five by twenty-five fenced in and, and asphalt area over there right adjacent to our, our salt shed. It's, uh, nice and visible both by the police and probably incorporating our new camp system at some time. Um, so I, uh, requested engineers, uh, proposals from two engineers that we are currently working with, Town Country and Rooker Millkey. You can see the numbers there, um, I've reviewed the scope of services, I believe they're, uh, they're good, I've also confirmed with Rooker Millkey that they're comfortable with their number. Um, and, you know, the project budget right now, uh, that's part of the, uh, twenty-eighteen capital improvement, um, as a result of the youth center here is about five hundred thousand dollars. So, you're just, uh, honestly, the, the Public Works, or sorry, the, the youth center are wanting to break ground within a month, so we were, we're gonna have to find a spot to, to put some of this stuff out probably this summer or whether we'll tarp it or, we'll have to figure that out, but we want to keep the youth center project moving and, uh, we foresee this being designed in the next month and a half bid and then constructed probably late summer, early, um, fall.
Okay.
Can you please bring back, um, some estimates for construction that would fall between that thirty-seven hundred and ten thousand square foot range, just so that we have options?
We can ask the engineers to provide that. Okay.
Other questions or comments?
This is not replacing another project with the borrowing, it just added into the borrowing?
Added into the borrowing. Yeah, I was gonna say, this, this, because of the youth center wanting to move so quickly, this is not part of the twenty-eighteen budget or CIP. This is, this is a brand-new project.
Is there a fiscal impact then?
It will, at some point, we will borrow the money dug in eighteen and it will hit the levy in the, in nineteen. It's part of debt service.
Further discussion or questions?
Um, has, will someone check with the folks at Rolling Meadows because this backs right up?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, I mean, uh, I'm concerned that it might affect the tranquility of life. Those folks are home all day and, uh, I don't know if that location will impact their lifestyles or not, but?
It should actually act as a sound buffer.
Yeah.
Um, it's gonna block, it'll, it'll block a lot of the sound that we currently have coming off the back of the building.
Okay.
Should keep it welcoming, I've thought about that, um, and it's not gonna be an overly tall building, no, no really tall than what we have there now and that area sits down kind of depressed.
What about the construction, how loud will that be?
Pretty normal, kind of pretty normal to what it is now. It's, it's not a, it, this is a, this is not like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of downplay this a little bit, this isn't, um, this is a storage shed, basically, it's unheated, we will have to have ventilation in it just because we'll have equipment operating in and out of it, but, you know, we're, it's mostly for storage, so we'll have large end bay doors and we will have man doors on the side, but we're not gonna, it's not gonna be like we have now where we whole, have a whole bunch of bays. It's really primarily gonna be for equipment and materials, so.
So it's not gonna be a loud construction, is what you're, what I'm?
It shouldn't be, no.
Okay.
I mean, it's a construction site.
I guess I just asked that you communicate with the?
Absolutely.
With the, uh, management over at Rolling Meadows.
Yep.
Um, and then the other question I have is for the chief, are you okay with that site for your impound lot?
Yeah, I think that site will be just fine, um, as long as we can make it, uh, big enough, which I think we can, uh, it'll be in line of sight, we're gonna put cameras over there, that's more than we have now, so.
Okay.
It'll work out just fine.
Well, that, I assume it'll be surrounded by fencing?
Yeah.
And opaque so that people aren't, um, affected by the?
It'll have slats in it.
Slats in it?
Yeah, similar to the one we have now, it has those green slats in it, so you can't see it very well.
Thanks.
Other questions or discussion? Okay, so we have the motion and second, to approve the task order of Rooker Millkey Engineers, the amount nineteen thousand four hundred dollars for the design bidding and construction services for the proposed new Public Works cold storage building. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
I really, uh, wanna thank you and Jeff and Brian for working quickly, um, to help make the youth center come online as quick as possible.
Sure.
It's fantastic that you were able to come up with a solution that's quick. Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, item L, uh, information from memorandum of understanding, MOU committee for building new library, uh, this is on the feasibility study, a capital campaign request for proposal response is due by April sixteenth, so, uh, our current librarian, Mary Davidson, put this together, uh, and it went to the MOU group and with very minor, uh, changes there, so we appreciate that, Mary. And, uh, so this lets you know what's there, take a look at it.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, in my mind, I thought we had already done this, um, in terms of going out for proposal, um, for capital campaign and that's how we came up with the twelve million dollar number, is that not correct? Was that just more like grassroots information gathering as opposed to paying a consultant to tell us?
I think the, I think you're referring to consultant that did the space needs study.
Hmm.
This is capital campaign for fundraising. And we have, we hadn't gone out.
So there was never, there was never any indication as to what they thought the capital campaign could raise?
No.
In that study?
No.
The, the library board, when they presented the information to the board back in August, they had a, I don't know if Mary remembers, but they, they had a number in there that they thought they would like to raise, but we've never asked a consultant to give that number to us, Jeff.
Thanks.
Yeah, this is to start to pin that down. Right, do you have, any other comments on that, Mary, are we on track here?
No, I, I don't, but I'd like to say that the, the library board, um, made a motion that they approved that they would contribute a certain amount to the cost of this, as, as did you all.
Yeah, we both put five thousand in.
Right.
Yeah, we split the cost.
Right, but the anticipated cost.
Yeah.
Because we don't know that it would only be ten thousand.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
So has there been any discussion about when the fundraising would actually start?
No, because first of all, you have a group come in, talks to community leaders, people in the community and decide how much could potentially be raised within the village of Oregon. And then from there, then you start working on the capital campaign.
These proposals are due back April sixteenth.
So this is a feasibility, what?
Yeah.
What potentially could be raised within this community? We don't, we don't know that yet.
Okay, so what is the advantage of having a consultant tell you what they think could be raised instead of just going out into the community, um, and, and just, man?
I'll speak to that too because I've been hearing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Gets, gets a little complicated.
I've been struggling with it, that ten thousand dollars is an awful lot to pay someone from a consultant?
Yeah.
From outside the village.
So there are a series of kind of chicken and egg problems that have to be solved in this process, so one of them is before you actually go out with your capital campaign, you need to have a plan for what you're gonna build and a, an estimated budget of what you're gonna build and an estimate of what you need to raise to make that happen. And as part of the capital campaign, for example, before you really move forward with it, you'll also be working with an architect to help put together at least a conceptual plan for what this is gonna look like because that will all then support the capital campaign process. So the way this is structured sequentially right now is that before we go to an architect and work with, uh, either internally and potentially with outside help to, to undertake a capital campaign, the first step is to try and come up with a preliminary budget. What do we think we're gonna be able to do here? And that budget from, at a preliminary, from a preliminary standpoint at least consists of three things. What the, one, what the village board has indicated it's willing to borrow, two, the impact fees that we think we'll have available, and three, what we think we can raise privately in the community. Those are the three sources of funding right now that are available, um, to build the new library. So the thought is, uh, the, the, the game plan that's been developed right now is we need to have at least a preliminary, a reasonable number, what do we think we can raise to plug into this budget estimate to then sit down with, as a community and with our architect and say, let's develop a conceptual plan now and a budget that we can go to the community with to raise the funds. Then, once the fundraising process is complete, then you'll know how much you really raised and at that point you'll do a final budget. And that final budget may be right on track with what was projected, or it might be higher or it might be lower, we, we don't know yet until we get to that point. But, um, I think the, the conclusion the committee reached is, you know, we need some help from some experts, and there are experts who do this, making a judgment about how much we think we can raise in the community before we can really move forward with the capital campaign. So I know that was kind of a long answer, but it's.
No, 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 and I understand exactly what you're telling me, or telling the board, but I guess I'm struggling, uh, and maybe this is more of a rhetorical struggle, um, we needed a new food pantry and the discussion started and the community, all of a sudden there were donors. Once they got out into the community that we need, we're gonna do a food pantry. Then the youth center, same thing. And a donor came forward because the need was there. need was there. So why spend, I guess I'm struggling with, why spend ten thousand dollars?
Well, we don't have a big donor yet. I mean, maybe one will emerge. If you have a different way to come up with a preliminary number for a, for a fundraising feasibility estimate, I'm all ears, but we don't have a better idea than to, to work with a professional to help us nail that number down.
Okay.
I know it's gonna cost some money, but...
Well, yeah, it's, it's, uh, obvious. I guess I didn't expect to spend ten thousand dollars to just...
It may not be ten thousand dollars. The other thing the committee has talked about is, uh, it, this consultant that works on this initial step, just the feasibility analysis, trying to evaluate this community and its potential to raise funds for this project, given all the facts and circumstances that are at play in this community right now. The committee may then hire either that consultant or someone else to help actually design and implement the capital campaign. This is a campaign where the community might decide, we're gonna try and raise, you know, three million dollars, which is a pretty big number. And so at least, I think that the MOU committee's perspective on this is, you know, let's try and, let's try and put together the best game plan possible to make sure we maximize our opportunity for success with the capital campaign.
Okay, so we have a consultant come in, they'll do their analysis and say X number of dollars.
Yep.
We, we estimate.
Yep.
We can raise X number of dollars.
Right.
Then what?
Then we, then the cap, then the next step is the committee...
Who does, who, who, who hits the ground?
So that, that still has to be, that still has to be determined, but I think the, the MOU committee, the village board, the library board, potentially working with its consultant, will have to figure out, okay, now how do we do this? Who are the, who are the boots on the ground? You know, what's the game plan? What are the steps in the process? That all has to be designed, figured out.
If I can offer my observations, I've, I've been involved in several capital campaigns, and I've been involved in one that was designed more like this, where really the intent of the, of the feasibility study was to determine what the community would support before going forward. And my experience is, when you're dealing with a, a project of this size, that you will get a, you will get a return on that investment in, in the feasibility study. It's almost, in my mind, it's the difference between doing your taxes, when you've got a very simple tax return, and just using TurboTax. And then as your life gets more complicated, actually paying five hundred bucks to have an accountant do it. The odds are that the accountant is gonna be more accurate. They're gonna find things you wouldn't have found, and eventually you'll, ultimately you'll get a return on that investment. So that's how I would think about this for myself.
Okay. Thanks, that helps me with my little struggle. Um, it's just, I get a little
impatient because, uh, this project is holding up other projects that are slated to happen in the village. And the one I'm referring to is that we've got a, a plan that as soon as we get the library launched, we wanna go forward with a senior center combined with affordable senior housing. And, uh, there is a terrible need for affordable senior housing in this village. I don't know how, how familiar everybody is with Rolling Meadows, but they've got a waiting list of sixty people on there. And that tells me the reason they're on that list is because the units there are very affordable. And, uh, cheaper than rent. So, again, if, I apologize for my impatience, but, uh, yet it, it just, uh, there are other things that, that need to happen, and they can't happen simultaneously. So, um, I guess that's all I'm gonna say.
No, those are good questions, Jerry. Thank you.
And I think Mike, and Mike can step in and correct me on this, but I, I think that the, at least the planning and a lot of the work associated with the senior center and that project, that can also move forward. Obviously, we can't break ground, I guess, at the site until that, till, till we're ready to, to break ground. But I think there's a lot of work that has to be done there that can still be moving forward on a parallel track.
And, and in fact, should be. For a developer to come in, if that's the route we decide to go, they're gonna have to apply for, for federal tax credits, and that's a process. They can't just flip that switch and have it tomorrow.
That, I mean, that is one of the things that Jeff and I will probably have the, the new planner we're gonna hire work on, is that project, to be honest with you. Somebody that would be working on it, you know, eight hours a day. It's gonna take some time. And, and we could certainly start working on that once we know, you know, if we're gonna build a library in 2020, we can start working on the senior center lot in nineteen. Absolutely.
Well, we know that the senior center, I mean, conceptually at least, are in is the land. It's, right? We're not necessarily borrowing for that project. I mean, not conceptually.
We only would, only borrow to finish the senior center. So we...
The inside.
Yes, right.
Yeah. So, in the grand scheme of things, that's a, relative to all of the other investments we're talking about making, that's a fairly small investment.
I think we have like two point five or three million dollars as a placeholder in the CIP right now for it.
Yep.
Other questions on this? Thanks for that discussion. Item, ma'am, discussion and possible action, temporary class B license for Oregon Hockey Incorporated. They have an event called Just Add Ice on April seventh, two thousand and eighteen at the Gorman Company, two hundred North Main Street. Police department background checks were completed on all applicants, so we need a motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. So fundraiser event, I presume, and security is all set?
Sounds like they're all set for their, their little fundraiser. Uh, there's no issue with the applicants.
There's what?
There's no issue with the applicants.
Okay. I didn't hear that right. I thought you said there was.
No.
I didn't hear it wasn't, so, okay. Are there any questions? We have motion second to approve the temporary class B license for Oregon Hockey on April seventh, two thousand and eighteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, report of committees. Item A, personnel, public safety and protection committee meeting February twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Trustee Carpenter, please.
So is this one gonna now happen on the sixteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yep.
So, um, correction then to the, or update to the agenda. So at the April seventeenth, village board meeting, there will be discussion with the municipal judge, police chief, and village attorney in a review of the following information. The memo information from Judge Cox approving compliance by licensees, and a memo from Chief Yule, um, liquor server license review. So we had a lengthy discussion at, um, the committee level, and so we need to talk about that more at the board level.
And I'm gonna send out, um, maybe at least two weeks before the meeting, a packet of, of information for that meeting for the board to look at, because we received additional information from Judge Cox, and I have some new information or additional information from the police department. So rather than making you try to read over a week, I'm gonna give you a couple of weeks to look at it.
Okay.
Yep.
Then item two is discussion of possible action regarding an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Oregon Code of ordinances relating to animals. And we had discussion about this as well, and it looks like there's an ordinance in our packet.
So, so there was an emotion that came up, but I think the, the consensus, I, my note, Jeannie, was that, um, if the board agrees, uh, we would direct Matt to, um, finalize the, the ordinance for first reading on April ninth. And, uh, there was a cover memo from Holly that sort of summarized what the changes we were looking at. And then Matt has found some additional changes that he, he liked to make to the ordinance before the board considers it. Right, Matt?
Yep, a few tweaks.
Yep.
So I guess the question for the board is, in general, is, uh, would the board like us to continue with this process? If you have any feedback or concerns, comments on the draft ordinance that you have tonight that we should be aware of, that might impact kind of the drafting process before it's finalized. Um, are we not dealing, we're not dealing with chickens here, are we?
Yeah, there's chickens.
Yeah, it says poultry and fowl.
Yep.
Oh, so we're saying they're not a...
Under ten, ten A.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Oh, farm or non-domesticated animal? Okay. So that's basically still prohibited, okay.
So that's, that's a, that's a question for the board, that they want to do that or not.
Well, I know there are chicken and fowl in the village.
Try not to look at you.
Yeah, I mean...
Not just me.
No, I mean, and, I mean, it seems to be becoming more and more commonplace.
It is. I mean, the villages show in hills, which is a densely populated urban neighborhoods, you know, right there on Lake Mendota, they have chickens.
Just no roosters.
No roosters, yeah. You can have up to a certain number of hens. I've got one a block from my house, and I can hear the hens about twice a year clucking away, but otherwise I don't notice them. So urban agriculture is becoming a thing.
I was gonna say, one of the houses we looked at before we ended up purchasing the one we lived in had like a built, like a actual miniature coop that mirrored the house and everything. It's really cute.
We get, or sorry, we get comments on chickens, bees, is something I think that really needs to be considered. That's becoming more and more, um, popular. Uh, miniature goats are things that we have had requests for. Um, and, you know, this list is kinda funny when you go down it, but unfortunately, exotic animals are becoming more and more of a thing. And so, uh, from our standpoint, our, our ordinance, when it was written in that, I mean, I think it started off as kind of a dangerous...
Dangerous animal.
Dangerous animal ordinance, you know, dealing with obviously problem dogs and maybe cats, if cats can be that mean, you know. But, uh, it's kind of exposed maybe holes in our, our ordinance on kind of some of these other animals that are becoming more and more prevalent.
I guess I don't have a problem with, um, animals that aren't affecting other people, either noise or health. So if, if we could make an argument that chickens could affect the health of other people, or that the noise would be ob, be ob, obtrusive, then I'd be inclined to, to wanna think through that. But in the absence of that, my own personal experience doesn't tell me that. But I'm not a farmer. Does, do, do you have any insight? You grew up on a farm.
You know, I...
Well, you have chickens. We have, we have experts here.
Yeah. I mean, backyard chickens are becoming more and more prevalent in urban areas. Driver on the city of Madison, they're...
And bees.
And bees. Well, I don't know about bees.
Bees are.
Bees are.
They're, they're also allowed in Short Hills. Stoughton is now moving forward with an ordinance to consider making them, so, legal. Madison allows it.
It, it, it comes down to also is how well things are being taken care of, too. I mean, it's just like anything else. You can have, you can have a dog run in someone's backyard, and it's perfectly cleaned and taken care of, or it could never be cleaned out and full of, of dog poop. And then, and that's, then it can become truly a nuisance type situation. Unfortunately, we don't have a depth of poop measurement in this ordinance, but, you know, we have, that's where we have to kinda have, uh, some sort of, you know, limitation on, on number, number of animals, types of animals, and, you know, just so we have something to enforce if we have to.
Or you could have just an ordinance that would talk to the cleanliness of areas where animals are contained.
It's very subjective, though. It's what some people think is clean and other, trust me on that one. What some people think is clean is not necessarily...
You'd have to make it objective to make it an ordinance.
Right.
There are some, so basically with what I've seen in the chicken and the bee areas, and these are the two most common areas where I've seen a lot of ordinances being developed, there are kind of two pieces of work legislatively that have to get done. One is just on the zoning side, to make it clear that it either is or is not an allowable accessory use. But then most of the work tends to get done, um, either in the zoning ordinance or in a separate licensing, licensing ordinance, where there are some basic ground rules that are set out for either bees or chickens, um, in terms of, you know, let's stay with chickens for the moment, you know, like no roosters, how many hens, um, what kind of, uh, chicken coop do you need to have, or chicken run, what kind of, uh, separation distance from, you know, your neighboring property line you have to have. So there are some, uh, models out there that I've seen kind of getting better and better. Uh, and then with bees, similarly, um, you know, number of hives, uh, big issue seems to be the, uh, so you all heard of a bee line? A bee line is a real thing, and it has to do with the orientation of where the bees leave the hive and return to the hive. And you, depending on how you orient it, you can, you can direct that. Um, so you don't obviously wanna direct the bees so they go right at the neighbor's patio. You wanna regulate that so they, they are not directed in that way. So, I mean, there's a lot out there. If you guys wanna see it, um, I could just share with you some examples of what bee and chicken ordinances are looking like these days, and you can take a look at it and decide if you wanna move forward or whatever you wanna do, but...
Matt, is there any information about property values next to these properties?
I've not heard or seen of any indication of property values declining in communities I work in where they, where they're doing this. Um, it tend, and, and it's not really all that widespread yet. So you, you might have a neighborhood, uh, you know, maybe a, a ten-block area where you might have two people who have chickens and two people who have bees. It's not like, it hasn't become that big a deal where tons of people are doing it. Um, so I have not, the thing that's been a much bigger issue than either bees or, um, chickens are frankly, people letting their cats out. That's been the big issue, where people have really gone crazy because cats killing birds and then neighbors coming to blows over it. So...
And probably in some of our newer sort of divisions, the covenants wouldn't allow them either, uh, chickens.
Yeah, and that's a private matter.
Like, in Burgomai, I don't think you'd have any of those.
And that'd be outside our control, but, yeah.
I don't know that we have any bees in town.
We do.
Yes, we do.
We do.
Yep.
And, and the question...
There was a lady here that had testified to it. I can't remember who, but...
I'd had a call from someone the other day, was asking actually if they could put bee hives on public land, and I said, we would not allow that.
So how do you deal with, how do you deal with someone that complains about backyard chickens or bees since they exist, and they're not in the ordinance?
We don't have anything that really, and if it becomes a, if, if we can follow it under nuisance, like if it were a rooster, we do have something in our ordinance that does allow, currently, you can't have anything crowing or, or anything like that. But if someone wants to put ten hens in their backyard, there's really nothing...
I thought it was against the zoning ordinance.
The bee, the chickens.
They might, it might, I, I'm not sure. It might, it might be that it's not an allowable accessory use right now.
Right. I think that's why that this was introduced, is if you're gonna change it and make it legal in the ordinance, you have to change the zoning ordinance, too.
I think so.
Yeah.
That's what I was...
It's both a, it's both a zoning issue and we've got in some other places to deal with it. So right now, I haven't actually dug into what we have on chickens or bees, so I'm not sure. But it sounds like we might wanna take a look at that and make sure you have what you want.
There can be allergy issues. I mean, if someone, would, would it make sense to allow bees, a beehive next to a home that, where someone had, uh, you know, what do they call that? Allergy?
Where they're allergic to bees and worried about these things.
Yeah, with allergic bees, and they can actually blow up them.
Anaphylaxis.
Anaphylactic shock, yeah. Thank you.
So what I've, and again, I'm, I don't, I'm not an expert. Um, certainly I've seen in communities where this has been discussed, people are expressed concerns about that, and that's a topic of discussion. And then what I hear on the counter side is, uh, honeybees are pretty mild-mannered. They don't, they're not like ground bees that are vicious. Uh, I, and I, I, as, uh, I will say personally, I did live next to a family that had bee hives. They had three hives. They were right next to us, and we had a deck out in the backyard. Never really noticed the bees. They just were never really an issue, so...
I do appreciate taking a giant step back, um, going through the ordinances. I think I talked about that when I first came on the board, is there are so many ordinances, and, and some of them are pretty old and pretty ineffective. So the fact that we're actually going through these, I think is a really good exercise, and this is a really good discussion. So I hope we do more of these, regardless of what the topic.
Well, I think maybe just to advance the ball, is I'll share some examples of bee and chicken ordinances with you, so you can just see what they look like, and...
That's really my, that's really my only hangup looking at these amendments, is that I consider some of those more domesticated farm-type wild animals, even bat houses. Um, I know some people are terrified of bats, and they're concerned about rabies, and, and other people think that's a great way to control mosquito populations, and, um, and so they'll put up a bat house, and they'll bring in wild bats to their yard. Um, and that wouldn't necessarily set well with other people, but I think when you understand more about certain animals, then you welcome them more to your neighborhoods. Part of this, I think, is an education piece.
So have we had complaints about chickens in the place?
Over the years, yes.
But, 'cause they had a rooster, or?
Um, just, I, I don't, I remember talking to Mark about it, and, um, I, I don't, I don't remember what. Um, I, I know, I will tell, tell you that Mark, uh, I'm not saying this is, you know, this is his mark, this is Mark's concern that, um, if somebody didn't take care of their chicken area, that you, it, it does attract, you know, things, rodents, right? He would say, he would use the word rats, and, you know, he's, and he's, you know, he felt that. Um, he said, you know, that, that's why he thinks it should've been out in the country versus in a village or city, but, you know, he, he never really strung opinion. But, so you got, he got some complaints about it over the years. I know City of Monona was also one that took...
They're doing it, they're allowing it.
Yep, yep.
So Matt'll tweak this a bit. You bring back some examples on chickens, is that right?
I'll tweak this, uh, and I'll include example of chickens and bees.
What about goats?
I've never seen anyone do anything with goats.
Bad business, or hard to keep?
They're just hard to keep, hard to keep together. They're one of the future.
And alpacas kind of fit in that same-
I've never seen anyone, from the urban agriculture, the only thing I've seen allowed so far are in terms of animal kingdom are bees and chickens. I haven't seen any other livestock allowed. I did see a request in one community for racing pigeons.
That actually, yeah, that's come, that's come up. Yeah.
But no, I've not seen that authorized anywhere yet.
Would you, could you do more digging as far as our ordinance and the chickens and bees? Are you going to check the zoning code?
I will check the zoning code. Yep.
Thank you.
Let's see what you have right now.
I already have them.
You already have them?
Yeah.
Yeah, goats are in this.
That's where I-
Yeah, chicken draw. Yeah, it's a track. It's like, it's called chicken tractor.
Does the comprehensive plan have to be revised as well?
I don't think that's going to be required because I don't think our comprehensive plan gets into that level of detail on what would be allowed in the different districts. I, I, we can check that, but I, I'd be surprised if it, for example, says that you can't have bees or chickens in residential districts. That's the level of detail that you typically don't get into in a comprehensive plan.
I see.
You got slightly.
We can check.
So this come back to the board or to public safety?
It's up to Ginny.
It's up to me?
Yeah, it's your call.
It's all on your shoulders. It's all on your shoulders.
It'd probably easier to go back to committee. Then we can make a recommendation to the board.
Okay.
So we don't have to have another discussion like this at the board level.
Well, and let me ask you guys this. Would you like to, would you like to break it into two pieces where we kind of finish the dangerous animal ordinance piece of this and, and get that through on one track while at the same time we can give you the information on bees and chickens and then you could take your time on that?
Yep.
Okay, let's do that.
Are there any other animals in town that I don't know about?
We usually don't know until we go into the house and then, oh, this probably shouldn't be in here.
That pet chimpanzee has to go.
Yeah, yeah.
If we outlaw squirrels, if we outlaw, outlaw squirrels, I'm going to post this in my backyard. So they're aware of it.
You know, I wouldn't even joke about that. People, people might take you seriously.
Okay, I think we're ready for item three.
All right, item three. This was a discussion on possible action regarding revising outdoor burning restricted regulations. So the committee's motion, and I'll make this motion tonight, was that we approved the revising the outdoor burning restricted regulations as presented in the packet.
I'll second that motion.
So it was brought to our attention that right now, as Jeff was talking about, we have some outdated ordinances that says that you can actually burn stuff in your yard when you're living in the village. And we thought that was probably may perhaps not a good thing. So worked with the police chief, or I mean, the fire chief, excuse me, and came up with a new draft ordinance for the board's review, which I think probably makes more sense for a more urban environment that we have now become.
So I've got this little tab that's covering my words. And I'm just wondering, does this allow burning in fire pits?
Yes.
No?
Fire pits it does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, and this would have to get turned into an ordinance to board, in board real stuff. So if you're, if you're okay with this, then Matt will have to draft an ordinance to come back to the board.
Yeah.
There are requirements for fire pits though.
But, yeah, but it still prevents what you can burn in a fire pit. You can't burn leaves, I believe, and brush or something.
Yard waste.
Yard waste, yeah.
So you, so Jeff, you can still have a fire pit. You can have a, you have a bowl. You can have all of the things that we see in people's yards. They just can't, they're not supposed to be so close to the house. And that's supposed to be burning leaves in there.
Yeah, burning leaves, that's the-
Yeah.
So, and the reason I ask is because I've always wondered, because in my gut, I, I feel there's a difference, but in reality, the smoke is going up. So I always wondered, once somebody sees smoke, you know, is the fire department going to come over? And I know in my heart that I should probably be 10 feet away from the house. And I know in my heart that it should be contained in a, in a fire pit structure, construction, which I have. But I never really realized whether or not I'd be in violation. Or whether I should call the fire department to let them know I'm going to have a fire pit.
Well, by ordinance, you have to do, have to get approved to do that now. So in the village.
So my gut was onto something.
Absolutely.
So, once this goes through, and this I think is just good for the public to know, certainly it's good for me to know. Do I need to get a, an approval from the fire department to-
You will not, once this goes through.
I'll just be able to use a fire pit to burn?
As long as it's regulation size.
And you're, and you're burning the proper things. You could only, like under this, you could only burn like dry wood. You couldn't put a pile of yard waste in there and burn with leaves and-
Grass.
Can't burn your garbage. No, we're burning your garbage.
Yeah, no burning your garbage.
Campfires, traditional campfires would be excluded too then.
Traditional campfire with just dry wood, that would be okay.
That would be okay.
That would be okay.
Doesn't it have to be in a bowl, in a metal bowl in the ground? Did I, or did I miss?
Yeah, must include a metal bowl or a pit.
With a screen cover.
Yeah.
It's all regulated in the ordinance they're looking to do, so. Right. I think, I think how this came up, and we talked about the committee levels, Jeff got a complaint about ash from a, right Jeff, from a-
That was part of, I mean, this was in works before. He's been working on this. But yeah, most recently, there was, there were, there, we every once in a while get a complaint, burning in the backyard and the person had actually obtained a valid permit. You're only allowed to burn on the third Saturday of every month, is that right?
First and third, I think.
First and third. You get a permit from the fire department, they issue those. And then there's certain restrictions they still have to have. But this person was legal, but it was causing ash to fall on people's homes and smoke and stuff like that.
Other questions or discussion?
So again, if the motion passes, then Matt will come back with, with the necessary orders.
Yeah. So we have the motion and second to rec, to approve the revising the outdoor burning restricted regulations as presented into an ordinance. So in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item four, please. Whoops, that's yours too.
So item four is discussion on possible action regarding a full-time position at the water and sewer department. And so I'll make the motion, this passed the committee three oh, but I'll make the motion that the village board approve authorizing Director of Public Works Jeff Row to advertise, solicit applications and conduct interviews for the 2018 budget funded full-time water and sewer maintenance person.
I'll second.
Okay, it's pretty self-explanatory. This is part of our staffing plan. And yeah, we're getting around to advertising for this and getting some resumes in, cover letters and, and, in applications. And like I said, it's actually, it's, it's in the budget. It's split 50% water utility and 50% sewer utility. I envision this person being trained on the sewer vector trucks so we can get that out a lot more than it has been. And then also we're, you'll see in the coming months here, procurement of a valve cycling machine. That's part of the 2018 budget as well. That will be something we're out there cycling our valves. And that helps, it makes the valves easier to operate as well as extends the life of the valves.
Are people like that hard to find? There is incredibly long list of job responsibilities.
Yeah, no, we, we have, we include a lot of our job responsibilities because quite honestly, when you're, when you go to work in public works, it can be a lot of different things. And I think some of that is carried over from the union days of making sure that we had a catch-all. Am I, am I catching that right, Mike? I think?
That's just the nature of the job.
Yeah, you know, it's just there's a lot of different things they can be doing. And we want to make sure that they know that they're not, you know, that the person applying for that is not just going to be doing this day in, day out. It's a very wide range of tasks that they could be doing.
Pretty awesome job.
Yeah.
Which you have to know in base.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we won't send anyone out to do something they're not trained or have not been trained by one of our other staff members, how to operate safely.
Other questions or further discussion? Seeing none, we have motion second to approve authorizing Director of Public Works Jeff Row to advertise, solicit applications and conduct interviews for the 2018 budget funded full-time water and sewer maintenance person. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item five?
So item five is discussion on possible action regarding revised case manager job description. So the committee recommends this unanimously. So I will make a motion that we recommend that the village board approves revised case manager job description brought forward by our senior center director.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Job description hadn't been updated in quite a while. There have been some-
Changes, just in some of the programs that we expect the case managers to be able to deal with at the county level. So we got rid of some old language, brought in some new language. Basic responsibilities are very much the same as they have been.
Thanks, Rachel. Are there questions or discussion? Seeing none, we have motion second to approve the revised case manager job description. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item six?
This was a discussion and possible action regarding policy and breaks for employees who are nursing. And this motion also carried unanimously from the committee. So I'll make the motion tonight that we approve the updated policy on breaks for employees who are nursing.
Second.
Thank you. Basically what it says. Other questions? It's nice to have that policy, I think, in place. Okay, so we have the motion second to approve the policy on breaks for employees who are nursing as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 10, minutes not requiring action. Information from March 8, 2018 Oregon Area Fire EMS District Commission meeting and MOU between Oregon Area Fire EMS District and firefighters local 311, vacation leave eligibility. And then library information. Item one, review of 2017 annual report. And two, the library board February 6, 2018 minutes, and interim directors monthly report. Those minutes are all online if people who are watching would like to see those. And again, thanks to Mary on that annual report that we see every year. It's, I'm sure, quite a job to get that done and we appreciate it. Any questions on those? Item 11, unfinished business. There's none listed. Item 12, excuse me, new business, discussion possible action regarding water and sewer utility maintenance worker job description. Recommended motion is to approve that job descriptions. Any motion, please?
Make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
So this is the description for the position you just authorized to recruit for.
We had to kind of hybrid two together because we, normally they're hiring a sewer person or a water person. So we kind of had to blend, blend this, include both.
Okay. There's a long list, like Doug said.
Exercise the water valves. Exercise the water valves.
Exactly. That's aerobic. That was Chiefs. That was, that was a good one.
Any questions? I think Jeff's answered them all. Some ways he performed.
Somebody didn't even ask.
That's my point. Thanks for helping me out. Okay, so we have the motion and second to approve the water and sewer utility maintenance worker job description. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, discussion possible action. The Bergamot development agreements for revised phase four E and phase five B. The recommended motion is to approve those development agreements for those phases. So need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from staff here?
Just that, if you notice the four E, I, I put on the, on the agenda, it's revised, because we added four lots to, to this phase. They already have paid for the ones that are, it says, if you look at the map, Leeward addition to Bergamot, those five lots have already been paid. We added the lots 158, 159, 160, 161 to this phase. And then five B is the, if you look at that map, that is coming off of Bergamot and Augusta Drive. That's a, that's a brand new area that they're moving into. It's west of Bergamot Boulevard. Okay. And so then we, Matt always prepares these development agreements and then they pay us for their contribution, the phases contribution for Lincoln Road and Jefferson Street.
Is that going to be Inverness on the other side of Bergamot Boulevard?
It's Interlaken.
Interlaken.
Interlaken, yeah, sorry.
Yeah. And that's going to be that phase that runs down along the 17th fairway and loops around and comes back?
Well, it's going to, it's actually going to be right behind Judy's house. And, yeah, and kind of heading east and west. And then it's just going to curve up maybe six homes when it hits the end over there.
And this is a really wacky question, but I just have to ask, Leeward, isn't that a nautical term?
I think so.
Why do, why do they use nautical terms in geography?
It's also, could be somebody's name.
Could be somebody's, well, they're using it as a direction.
Wayward.
Maybe, maybe golfers use it too.
Two streets by my house.
Those weren't part of the Bergamot, that was Windcrest subdivision.
Oh, so Leeward addition is actually not a direction. It's the name of the, or is it the direction of the addition?
It's just the name of the plat.
They called the plat that, Leeward addition.
Yes.
They wanted to name it-
I thought they were trying to give me direction on where the addition was going to be.
I mean, Leeward Lane is actually a street that-
I'm trying to orient myself to the ground.
You may be overthinking that.
Just possibly.
I think you're out of orientation.
Once upon a time in my life, Leeward actually meant something that mattered. And so I'm just trying to make sure that it doesn't here.
What does it mean?
I can't remember. There's Windward and Leeward on a, on a sailboat.
And actually in Windcrest subdivision, which is to the east of that, there is those two streets that are named that.
Windward and Leeward. Now I gotta look it up because Matt doesn't know.
I was gonna say, we all have the internet.
Back to 12B. Any other, any other questions?
It's so chickens.
Any other questions on 12B other than from Jeff?
Also, it's not a direction. It's which way the wind's blowing. There you go. It's not a direction at all. So this could be on either side depending on which way the wind's blowing. So I think you need to go back and rewrite that.
I haven't used this for quite a while.
Does that relate to a chicken at all?
They're all out of order.
Yeah.
What do I do? No control C.
Call the question.
Chief, can you do something? Okay, we have the motion second to approve the development agreements for revised phase four E and five B in Bergamot. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item C, approval of pending new operator licenses approved by the police department. Ace's main tab, Alan Chapman. And stop and go, Robin D'Agony.
I gotta just, I gotta just say, I don't know what to do with this one.
Well, it, it, okay. So, so we, we, we gave, so Candy and I and maybe Brian, we, you know, at this point, the board has not changed the policy about how to handle operator license. It, there will be that motion that comes out of these committee. So Candy and I decided to put it on tonight's agenda. Matt can have a lot, I know Matt has a lot we could say about it. One of the things the board could do is they could either, you can either approve it, you can deny it, or Matt's idea was refer it to the personnel meeting next week, Monday night, and let the committee talk about it.
Can we do that? Can I make a motion to do that?
Invite, invite the applicant to the committee meeting. Because one of the things that, that Matt will say is that as much as we would all love to have it black and white, somebody applies, you reject the person or approve it, some, in some cases like this, it's, it's a little, little fuzzy, I guess. I'm actually going to think of a better word, but a little more difficult to, gray, that's a better term. Thank you, Lisa.
Well, I, I think the reason it might make sense to refer it to the committee is that you may have questions based on the history. Clearly, there was a time here when this person had a lot of OWI violations. The last OWI violation though, apparently was 2011. So there's been some time. Now, I'm not sure what the committee or the board is going to make of that fact that there's been a number of years that has passed. That, that's one factor that you may consider. But you may have questions that you may want to ask this person. What was going on then? What's going on now? Has something changed? And that may be information that you'd like to have before you have to make a decision. At the end of the process, you are going to have to make a decision. And you will be able to consider these violations so long as you find that they're substantially related to the licensed activity. And I think we generally find that like an OWI violation is. But I don't know how the board feels about trying to get more information about what was happening. If, if these violations were more recent, you might say, we don't, we don't really need to have a conversation. And I don't know where you draw that line. I don't know that there is a great place to draw that line. So the last violation here was like seven years ago or something. So the last violation here was like seven years ago or something like that.
So I would make a motion to refer that to Personnel, Public Safety for discussion.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Can we also, when it, when that's referred, can we extend an invitation to this individual to attend?
And that's everything that Candy and I thought, you know, rather than having somebody come and talk about their background on TV, it's a little more informal at the meeting, so.
One of the communities I work in, when faced with this situation, does exactly this. They have the committee meet with the person. If the person, if the person doesn't come after they've been invited, then the committee tends to recommend an aisle. You know, if you're not willing to come in and talk about it, then, you know, you're not giving us any help here. If they do come in, then they, they want more information and then depending on what they learn, that has some impact on the final decision.
So Matt, when people come, safety comes, can he be put under oath?
Um, that's a good question. I don't know if you, if we have the authority to put somebody under oath in a way that would subject them to perjury prosecution if they then lied. I'm not sure about that.
I'm not worried about perjury prosecution. I'm just worried about if they're not truthful. We find out after the fact, if we prove it, that we can pull the, pull their license.
It doesn't, Matt, the only reason to put them under oath is if you want to be able to prosecute them for perjury. If you, you can still, if, if somebody is dishonest with you, even if they haven't been put under oath, you can still consider that in making your decision. And as, as important information about their character and whether or not, you know, you, you want to approve the license or not, so.
So, so after the fact, if we find out that they told us something untrue and it's continuing, can we pull the license?
Not clear. I, I, I'd need to look at that.
I would just curious.
Depends. I think it depends on this, you know, if, if it's information that would, that you find out additional information that would demonstrate that they, for example, are not qualified to hold the license, clearly you could take away the license. If you find out something that they were untruthful about that doesn't necessarily disqualify them, then I'm not so sure.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, I'm just curious. So we have the motion second to move Alan Chapman to Public Safety Committee. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so then we'll need a motion on for stop and go, Robin Dregoni.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Chief, any concerns about Robin?
Nope, no concerns.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, there's nothing. 13, there's some future agenda items. Item 14, the board may meet in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 19.851E to discuss strategy related to the annexation agreement between Forward Development LLC, Highlands of Netherwood subdivision and the village. Need a motion, please?
Second.
Thank you. Go call, please.
Staton?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Paul Lee?
Yes.
Budrow?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to closed session and we will adjourn from closed session in this room.